We're gonna call this meeting to order. It looks like all of the board members are present. We're gonna start the meeting with a moment of silence for the remembrance of those lost on this date 24 years ago in the terrorist attacks on 9/11. Move on to the National Anthem with Dan Barnhill and Boone County High School. And if you'd remain standing so we can have the pledge of the flag led by Yeely Elementary.
I have to have allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're gonna move on to item four and turn the meeting over to Dr. Hauswald for good news. Dr. Hauswald.
Yes, good evening, Board. Thank you Chairman Parks. I'm elaborating on comments made earlier by Mr. Parks. Today on this anniversary of 9/11, many of our schools held events or taught subjects in remembrance. For example, at Bally Shannon Middle School today, I, along with Board members Young and Wolf, were invited to be a part of a memorial stair climb. It was an activity created by our history teacher, Mr. Daley. I know he's here, saw him somewhere. He could wave. Oh, he just, okay. I knew he was here. The object was to climb the equivalent of 2,200 steps that represent the 110 stories of the World Trade Center. Earlier, you could probably saw in the pictures that we went, that along with students went up and down steps in Bally's courtyard, and many of the students completed 79 loops or flights up and down, which was equivalent to the 110 stories of the World Trade Center. And afterwards, they rang about. It was a really impactful event, and it was student-led, of course, and helped, with a lot of help and assistance from our teachers and staff. It's just one example of many. Yeah, there he is. He popped back in. And many, I know some of our local elected leaders, in addition to board members, participated. So we want to thank everybody, particularly the teachers and the students at Bally Shannon and all of the schools that took time out of their day to incorporate this into their curriculum, into today's, and for purposes of remembrance. And with that, we're going to move on to the other good news. Good news, item one. Break the Mold winner tonight, Allison Mueller. Congratulations to 7th grade science teacher Allison Mueller of Gray Middle School. She is breaking the mold of teaching science. In her class, there are no lectures, only experiments that require critical thinking to problem solve. And at this moment, we're gonna see a video.
So make sure that you shake it. You don't want any sediment in the bottom.
Right now, we're doing bath bombs, and they are trying to prove with evidence where those gases came from, and then eventually putting together that it is a chemical reaction. Even if they're not excited about a bath bomb, they get excited about the next lesson of the MRE.
This is a new science curriculum called Open SciEd taught by Gray Middle School Science Department Leader Allison Mueller. The excitement for the students comes from allowing them to have some skin in the game.
It's very much let the students explore, kind of give them a prompt, and let them figure it out as you progress through the unit.
So instead of the normal lecture, maybe a lab, maybe some group work, it is all kind of led by the students. So it is their opportunity to come up with these investigations that we're doing. I think that it's more engaging.
When it comes to student-centered learning, I know Allison puts ownership of students and their learning on them. And she will share the big ideas, but she will not give them the answers.
Towards the first day of school, when I was confused about something, she came over and helped me understand it more, and I kind of understood the concept of what we were learning about, and she made me feel like asking for help, like I shouldn't be afraid to ask.
For a 7th grader who's used to looking in a science textbook and getting the definition or getting the answers right away, it can be frustrating. Even when it's frustrating, Allison isn't giving in. She's asking questions and probing and trying to get them excited about finding it out on their own.
She made me realize my full potential in a way that I could also help others. I was never really a science kid, don't tell her that. 6th grade, not my best year in science. I think I had a B in that class.
But then because of her teaching methods, which I really admire, she broke stuff down into pieces where it made so much more sense.
If I would've gone into science classes and had a teacher that engaged me the way that she does, I think I would have a different love for science.
I've never really liked science, but it definitely has changed a little bit so far this year, so hoping by the end of the year, I'll be one of my favorite subjects.
It is crazy to see the change from the beginning of the year students in science to the end of the year students in science, because they realize how much they have to do with this curriculum. And it really is so cool to watch them kind of take ownership of their learning and of their science world.
Walking in there and seeing the passion that she has for the content and seeing the passion that she has for kids in general. She has a great sense of humor, builds great relationships with kids. Anytime I go into classrooms, I want to see the engagement from students through the roof. So I want to see kids leading the conversation. I want to see kids engaged in what they're doing.
To be clear, these students are not teaching themselves. However, this new curriculum, Open SciEd, is about student empowerment, where students are learning critical thinking skills, how to collaborate, while also modeling good character traits.
Seeing that it takes them to guide the lesson, it really is a change in mindset for them. I think that majority of my kids do a 180 when they come in here. They get involved in something.
I thought I would never repay her back for the amount of wonderful impact that she created on me as a student and as a person of character, which I think is the true meaning of a teacher, which Ms. Mueller does so beautifully.
Not only is she creative, not only is she personable with the students, Allison loves science. She loves her job.
Ms. Mueller, congratulations on being the September Break the Mold winner. You certainly deserve it.
Allison, I am so proud of you. You are so deserving of this award. Congratulations on breaking the mold.
Congratulations, Ms. Mueller, on breaking the mold.
Congratulations, Ms. Mueller, on winning the Break the Mold Award. You're a great teacher, and I like your teaching methods a lot.
Congratulations on winning Break the Mold, Ms. Mueller. You truly deserve it, and I've already told you this, but congratulations on your wedding. I hope it's amazing as you are.
Coming up, Allison, and we've got a certificate. Oh, she's...
Coming up, Allison, and we've got a certificate. Oh, she's, we'll let you dry the eyes. No, it was incredible. Coming up, and then we're going to have you introduce the family. Say a few words, and we have a certificate for you. And then while they're all standing there, if you'll stay, just say a few words.
Really sad at this. I'm just really grateful. You know, these people up here are probably the reason that I do what I do. Just based on their support and all of that kind of stuff. I'm just really grateful.
Do you want to do any introductions? Family?
I can't. I mean, these are my soon-to-be-in-laws, my fiance, and my parents, and then some amazing staff that I work with. They're phenomenal. And then my principal on the edge.
Who would be better at science? You said that on the video.
I could not do it without them. Without them, I mean, I'm sure some of you are in the profession, and you know, you'd go crazy without your people. So they are the reason that I am even half capable of doing anything in that room.
Let's give Allison.
They are. Yes, there you go. Thank you so much.
Mr. Ryan, you're next. If you guys, if you want to make your way up while I'm talking, that would be great. Good news, item two. Outstanding Administrator Award. Well. You want to stand on the sidelines and tell them that? Okay. If he stands here, then I can hide behind him. So. Good news, item two. Outstanding Administrator Award. Raul High School Assistant Principal Cody Ryan is the Kentucky World Language Association 2025 Outstanding Administrator of the Year. This, yeah, I know. This award recognizes a school administrator who has demonstrated exemplary support of world language learning and teaching at their school. Congratulations, Mr. Ryan. He will be officially recognized Saturday, the 13th, at the KWLA Fall Conference in Lexington. And I know that it's what an honor, a statewide recognition for someone having that kind of impact on world language. We're just proud to have Mr. Ryan as part of our, as part of our team here at Boone County. And we're going to now have you come up here and say a few words.
Well, I prepared just a short 30-minute speech, but I will spare that for you. I really, I don't have a whole lot to say other than I feel, well, I'm super honored to be getting this award. But I also am like, the teachers are the ones that do all the work. So I feel a little bit weird that I'm getting this for just supporting our amazing world language teachers and our EL teachers. So I'm proud of them and proud of the work they do, but glad to work at Raul and be able to support them in that endeavor.
Now, you stay.
Lots to celebrate. Good news, item three. We have two district students on the Education Commissioners Advisory Council, which is pretty impressive when you consider the number of school districts in the state of Kentucky. What an honor to have two this year. So congratulations to Prisha Shaw of Raul High School and Tara Rakesh of Cooper High School. They were selected to be on the Kentucky Education Commissioners Student Advisory Council for the 25-26 school year. The council meets to provide valuable student feedback on critical issues impacting public education. The Commissioners Student Advisory Council was recently modeled after our very own Superintendent's Student Advisory Council, also known as SSAC, the same group that student representative A.J. Wykoff presides over. Boone County School started the SSAC as one of the first in the Commonwealth 24 years ago. Mr. Rakesh also serves on the SSAC. At this point, if Prisha and Tara would come up, we're going to introduce them, get some photos. Let's give them a big round of applause.
It's interesting the impact our student voice has on both local policy and state policy. And so. And so the reality is, we have two students sitting at the table with our commissioner, who really represents the Kentucky Department of Education, but also is heavily influential in guiding and also recommending the development of new policies and all to improve education in the Commonwealth. So it's a significant voice they have. So I know as board members and superintendent, we also have just another powerful set of voices in Frankfurt. And it's quite an honor and a privilege to have both of you selected. So congratulations. Now, who wants to practice their voice? Who wants to say a few words? And we'll step away, but I know your family's here, so if you have your family come up, we'll get one, and then we'll make sure we get that place. I saw, yeah, come on up. Would you like, we'll get you some photos, but I'm happy to take a photo. I might also, you know, order something on Amazon.
You don't know. Good news, item four. Boone County School District Preschool Ratings. I know Mike is here. We'll introduce a few other people. But the Boone County School District Preschool Ratings are out, and 10 of our preschools earned three-star ratings. Yale Elementary School earned a five-star rating. And here to acknowledge this honor is our preschool director, Dr. Mike Shires, Principal Rainey Turner, preschool teacher, Ms. Kaiser, and paraeducators, Ms. Townsend and Ms. Sander. Congratulations to all the following schools, and I believe that Dr. Shires is going to recognize them.
Yeah, so the State Department released this Kentucky All-Stars Rating System scores for all of our schools. We have 11 locations, sites, and all 10 received a three, which is a very respectable score. One school scored a five out of five. That is Yale Elementary School. So ladies, if you'd like to come up, we'd love to recognize you. Congratulations.
Okay, and finally, good news, item five. Again, thank you all so very much. Dr. Shires, congratulations. Preschool is such an important component of the work we do here in Boone County. We know it's really essential infrastructure. It's vital to our families and to our students, preparing them to be ready to learn. As a former elementary school principal, I'm well aware of the impact of early childhood education and all the way back from the Johnson administration, some 60-plus years ago, in his War on Poverty, the creation of Head Start. We have more than 50 years of data that prove that early childhood education works, that it is one of the most effective means by which we can prepare students to be reading level in grade three, math, appropriate math levels in age six, and also graduation on time, graduation rates. All of that data is most significantly impacted by a child's readiness to learn in kindergarten, which is most directly impacted by early childhood education. So kudos to the work that all of you all are doing, Yale Elementary School and your team. I'm well aware, as a former head start director for 10 years, executive director for 10 years, accomplishing those five stars is very impressive. And to the board, who continues to invest and recognize the importance of early childhood education to create opportunities and access for our students, it's quite impressive at a time where many, many places are either reducing or limiting expansion. So thank you, Dr. Shires. And finally, good news, item number five, The Orange Frog Returns Video. Mano, I know you're up, Ms. Crigger. I see you back there. Mano Elementary School once again embarks on a training mission to promote positive school culture among staff, students, and the community. Principal Connie Crigger is here to explain why you want to choose to be orange and not green. And it says on here, the video plays after you speak, so we're going to let you tee this up. Ms. Crigger? That's you. Come on up here. If you don't speak into the microphone, the folks at home can't hear. So that's what I've been told. Just why some people tell me not to use the microphone, I think. But I'm not sure. Okay, thanks, Ms. Crigger.
No problem. We're super excited because we were notified by ITLN that Sean Acor, the author of Happiness Advantage, is writing a new book, and they wanted to do a case study on us since we've been doing this for 10 years, and we've had a lot of success with it. So ITLN was gracious enough to do a retraining of our whole staff at no cost to us so that we could embark on another adventure and continue with our positive culture and climate in the building.
Thank you. With that, I believe we have a video.
That's how a whole group of people just made another whole group of people feel good.
I jokingly say that my grandma was the first positive psychologist. I had that as a child, not knowing what that was. So that when all of this first came up and I read a book back in 2013 called Happiness Advantage, it just clicked with me because it was really what I was kind of raised with.
10 years ago, school principal Connie Crigger introduced her staff and students to a program promoting positive school culture known today by her students as The Orange Frog, starring Spark. That first kindergarten class is now in high school, and the training remains infectious beyond man at the middle and high school levels.
I feel like it has made an impact on my life and definitely my younger and my older sister.
The students can tell you about Spark. They can tell you what it stands for. They can tell you, you know, how it's influenced them. And I do believe when they have that mindset, that they go into a new school and hopefully carry that on.
Following Spark, which stands for self-awareness, positivity, attitude of gratitude, and I respect, if I didn't say that, and kindness.
Those were all really, really good morals that I think every person should be taught. It encourages me to be an upstander, not a bystander.
The Orange Frog is a parable from Sean Acor's The Happiness Advantage. It teaches the benefits of positivity. It can be applied anywhere, from schools to jobs to family relationships, to increase positive attitudes, leading to increased productivity and stability at home.
It's kind of like a symbol of like being like a good person to others.
Mrs. Crigger started with training her staff. More than a decade later, many of that staff had retired, so she invited her entire school staff to a new training this summer.
So this group's experience is that three different ways to feel happy.
Part of what you learn with the book is about the ripple effect, that, you know, you ripple out acts of kindness or an attitude of gratitude or respect.
I was here until fifth grade, and I look back and I see we were really taught well how to treat each other.
We want them to succeed in the future, and just going into the future in general with a positive outlook is going to help them.
We definitely live in a more negative society probably than we've lived in in a long time. We do our children a disservice by not making sure that we're combating technology and all of the things that are making them an anxious generation.
As Mrs. Crigger says, leading by example starts with the adults.
We start every faculty meeting, every staff meeting, with something called compliments and concerns. And so they look at their colleague and they say, hey, I want to compliment Barb. She was helping me with this the other day, and I was really grateful for that. That's how we start every single meeting we have. Well, guess what? I rarely ever get a concern.
During my first grade year, it was during the middle of the COVID pandemic. And I came in, and one of the things they were doing in that school at the time was this kind of like this bucket thing. Everyone had a bucket, and if you had something positive or nice to say to them, you wrote, and then you put it in there. And then when I walked into the classroom on my first day, I was kind of nervous and scared, and my bucket was overflowing, and that was awesome.
I think it's great for all kids to experience it because it really helps them build on themselves.
So when I hear graduates still talking about it, oh, yeah. And, you know, we even, a couple of times, they said, we tried to get a kindness club started, you know, once we were either at middle school or high school. So they're trying to figure out, you know, how to keep that going. And we talk to them. I'm like, hey, guys, you are going to be the ripple effect now.
I go to Gray, and then lots of teachers have said, you guys are one of the best classes we've had.
Sometimes somebody will say, oh, that's kind of Pollyanna. Is it? When we have 150 kids leave here as a class and go, and now they're going to be mixed with a lot of other kids, my perspective is even if only 20 of those kids are able to do that, that's 20 more than you had before. And those 20 can impact 20 other kids. They have research now that talks about how people are more successful in their jobs. All kinds of research talks about that you live a healthier life when you're positive.
It's kind of like, as you get exposed to it more and more, it becomes to start being put into like kind of your belief system.
Whatever behavior is modeled early in life will be contagious. Utilizing a simple kindness concept can change the world.
Thank you so much, Ms. Crigger, and to everyone there. And that concludes the good news for tonight. I'll turn it over back over to Mr. Parks.
All right, we'll move on to item five. Turn the meeting over to A.J. Wykoff for the Student Board Representative Report. Mr. Wykoff.
Hello and good evening. This previous SS-
This previous S.S.A. meeting was great in setting the Tonin Foundation for our council this school year. On September 3rd, the middle and high school representatives got to meet for the very first time with the goal of breaking the ice. We spent a good portion of the time getting to know each other as long as focusing on the topic of mental health. Middle school and high schoolers were split up respectively, and we got to discuss amongst ourselves what we do after stressful days, what resources we rely on for support, and what we could do better to be there for each other and help break the stigma on mental health. This topic was not only eye-opening for the sponsors, but I believe eye-opening for all of us there that we need to be there for each other more. After this section came our high school meeting where we redistributed our freshmen and members into our committees, which include access and opportunities, communication, student voice, and mental health. These committees have been a work in progress for a couple of years. And with the help of my vice chair and secretary, Autumn Barker and Morgan Brown, we are striving to reach the goals that we set this month and provide the resources and helping hands that these committees may need. Some of these goals include surveys to elevate the student voice past just us, disabled programs and extracurriculars, and also boosting our profile through an Instagram account. Thank you, and I look forward to updating you guys next month.
All right, item six, Dr. Housewald for Superintendent's Report.
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you very much.
If you all want to take your leave, you're welcome to. The rest of it's pretty exciting.
Everybody leaving. Now the Boone County folks are, Boone County High School folks are front and center. You won't be able to make faces now, Ms. Black. We'll know when the football coach is asleep. I'm just saying if you were asleep. I'm not saying that he was asleep. Later, the football coach is going to sing God Bless America, I believe. We'll wait for that.
All right, we're going to move on to item seven, which is a public hearing. For any of those who would like to speak on the tax rate levy, we'll hear from the public. Please keep your comments to two minutes or so. That way we can get through the list here of folks. The first person on the list is Mr. Kelly Reed.
Thank you. Kelly Reed, Boone County Education Association. I am speaking in favor of the tax increase. As you know, this is not so much a tax increase as a leveling out over the past few years. If we look back 10 years, we'll see that the rate that we're asking about today is almost exact to the penny of what we had 10 years ago. There is fluctuation in the tax rate in Boone County over the years, but that is not based on Boone County education. That's based on the way that the property is assessed. I do want to mention the work that we, Boone County Education Association, have done with the Board of Education, and thank you for that. I've mentioned this at previous meetings. I'm going to mention it again. Because of the hard work that we have done with what has been entrusted to us by the citizens of Boone County, we were the first county, the first local Board of Education to hit a $50,000 base pay for our earliest teachers. I cannot say that enough. I will say that again and again and again. And that's because of the hard work and the penny pinching that we've had to do on both sides of that equation. And I see that as a benefit to our students because we are recruiting and retaining the best teachers, the best custodians, the best bus drivers, the best cafeteria workers that we can. With that, I do want to mention that behind me I have quite a few members of our Boone County Education Association, some of whom will speak, some of whom will say, yeah, me too. But also, we have some of our community partners with us who may or may not speak, but they're going to say, yeah, we agree with this as well. Thank you very much.
And Randy Stigler?
Stigall.
Stigall, sorry. Handwriting.
Looks like you remember my name, Jesse.
I remember Randy.
Well, I'm Randy Stigall from 812 Dobbin Court in Hebron. And I don't agree with you. Gentlemen, I want to return tonight to this board to make you aware that you are significantly burdening fixed-income homeowners, essentially the retired and the elderly. This burden is growing because home values have exploded over the last four to five years. Social Security and pensions did not grow at the same rate. Since 60-plus percent of the county property tax goes to local schools, your choices on tax rate have the greatest leverage to give these folks relief. It's rumored that a majority of this board planned to ignore the increase in home values and hit the fixed-income group with a second punch in the gut by increasing the rate. I remind you, the Boone County Fiscal Court chose a rate to keep incomes constant. With some pressure, the Library Board did the same. This is an era where all government services need to cut to keep taxes, tax income stable. May I suggest significant administration cuts? With the Federal Department of Education being much more selective under Mr. Trump in funding local schools, you will need less administrators to seek, manage, and report federal grants. Since in Kentucky, we're not privileged to have the levy system like Ohio, our only choice is to appeal to the school board. And if the appeal is ignored, vote the tax-happy board members out of office. I believe the 2026 tax bills will arrive a few weeks before the November election. Those of you who vote for a rate increase will be top of mind to the voters in the 55-plus age group, a very large demographic group in Boone County.
All right. Next on the list is Jerry Gels.
My name is Jerry Gels. I am an employee of Boone County, but also I'm a parent. I live at 99 Worlow Way in Union, Kentucky. 20 years ago, when my family was looking to where we would settle, we chose Boone County. And it was explicitly because of the school system. I fell in love with Boone County High School and Ryle High School and all the things that they had there. As an entrepreneur and a business owner as well, I had several rental, seven rental properties. And when I first got my tax bill, when I saw what my house payments were going to be, I was blown away at how little we pay in Boone County in property tax. Literally, it's almost a third of what one of my rental properties was over in Cincinnati. And when I look what we get for this investment, I can't, I couldn't be more overwhelmed and happier with what my kids have received since they've come through Boone County schools. I won't ever forget COVID, the teachers showing up with things that they had bought out of their own pocket, delivering them to our front house. It was like having a celebrity show up in that time of loneliness. I look at Kelly Elementary, where my cousins went to school. And just if you want to see something special in what a school system does for kids, that's an amazing place, right? And I don't think it's unique, but my experience, it's a special place. And when I think about this tax levy and why I support it, it supports those teachers doing that work on the ground level. If you want to see something really special or heartbreaking, have a homeless kid in front of you. The amount of resources that my teachers have pulled out of their personal pocket, because there are not resources. We call religious organizations. We, I wear the phones out when we have those kids, and it's my teachers that are making the difference in this community. The other thing that I'll put out there is I don't know where else in the country, much less the state, that you can get an associate's degree for about $4,000 to $3,000. And it's all because of the work that we do here. That investment over time saves families $40,000, $60,000, $70,000. And it's the work that Boone County schools did leading that. And I just can't get over not seeing the 65 cents or whatever this tax rate is going to be is not worth it. And I think it would be selfish to not put it forward and support your teachers. Thank you.
Next will be Chair Caldwell. Sorry if I said that wrong. Oh, I'm sorry. I did skip one. My apologies. Go ahead.
Hi. I am a teacher at Ryle High School for, this is my 24th year. I was a student in Boone County schools from seventh grade all the way up. I've lived here for, I'm 54 years old. You do the math. I can't do that. I'm an English teacher. Boone County School District, like other districts across the state, relies on local taxes to support learning for our students by filling the gap between state funding and the actual costs of running a school district. Critical funding that pays for student services, programs, and support, such as safety and security, classroom assistance, facilities maintenance, custodial, technology, curriculum, and supplies that the state only partially funds. We're talking crucial funding that pays for the day-to-day operations and directly supports our classrooms, students, and staff. This tax maintains the number of staff in critical roles to ensure the needs of the 20,000 students in our district that are being met. Remember, the community and private schools benefit from our tax-supported programs and facilities, like the busing we provide for private schools and the essential pull-out services we provide to support students in private schools. In fact, any Realtor will tell you that our schools draw new homeowners who want their children to attend our amazing schools to benefit from our excellent tax-supported programs and facilities. And all homeowners, even those with no children in our schools, benefit from a better-educated community, serving them and their property values increasing, partially due to the success of our schools. This would significantly impact staffing, special education, transportation, building maintenance, extracurricular activities, music, arts, athletics, and other services. This is not a new tax or funding source. Taxpayers are already paying this tax. Renewing this tax increase covers inflationary costs. The money collected from this tax stays in our district to support our students, our staff, and our schools so that we can continue to meet the expectations of our students' parents, which we have a responsibility.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I skipped Mr. Bill Kunkel. My apologies.
I'm Bill Kunkel. I live in Union. First off, you know, a fair property taxation is what this country needs. It is not fair to take it from property. Property has always been the foundation of America, the foundation of Kentucky. Kentucky says right here, absolute and arbitrary power is denied. Absolute and arbitrary power over life's liberty and property of free men exist nowhere in a constitutional republic, not even in the largest majority. I know this has been ratified in 1891, but if you go to the 14th Amendment of the Constitution, it says the same thing. We can't do away with that. And you're going to find out that, especially in Texas right now, they're getting ready to go to the Supreme Court over this, taking from property. You need to find some other avenue of getting taxes or supplying the schools. I'm 67 years old and I don't really want to lose my property. And I can't sustain myself over that. I mean, all our presidents, I mean, I got five of them here that says nothing is yours if someone else can take it away. And that is Thomas Jefferson. George Washington said, freedom and property rights are inseparable. You can't separate them, you know, if you want freedom. John Adams says, property must be secured or liberty cannot exist. We're losing our liberty. And John Jay, the Supreme Court Justice at the time, no power on earth has a right to take our property from us without consent. And they're taking it without consent now. We need to find some other avenue because it's going to go to the Supreme Court in Texas and it's going to go all the way through the state. So find some other way to get your money.
Next will be Stacy Black.
I don't have anything prepared, so hopefully I don't ramble on. But I'm just going to, you know, everyone that has spoken here tonight has talked about the strength of our schools here in our community. And your community and your property taxes or your properties are only as strong as the schools that exist within that community. For me personally, though, I'll speak to the need for the tax increase from a hiring standpoint. So this past summer was the first summer since I've been the head principal that I didn't spend the entire summer filling positions, albeit custodial staff or teaching positions. And so the applicant pool was strong and healthy. Also, teachers stayed at my school because of the increased salaries that they were provided this year. And so in order to be able to continue to do that, to continue to be competitive, and to continue to be recognized in the state as one of the top school districts, I think it's important that you support this tax increase. So, thank you.
Cliff Raab.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm a resident of Boone County. I believe in Boone County so much. We're in the process of building in Boone County. And so I'm also in that 55-year-old age group. If I could have you take more, I would. Because again, I believe in the investment. I'm a Covington kid. I live in Boone County now, building a home because I probably will, again, end my days in Boone County. So the decisions that you all make now, all right, are for long term. And so it's for the kids, it's for the students, it's for the future. So yeah, take it. Thank you.
Ari Spoford? Gotcha.
Hi, my name is Ari. I live in Burlington, and I'm a renter. My take-home pay is about $2,000 a month. Rent in my one-bedroom apartment is more than half of my paycheck. This increase in the levy will certainly be passed on to me by the company I rent from. I don't think I'll ever have kids. I can't imagine at this point in my life being able to even provide for one, so I should have to pay for a service I don't use. Well, because I think it's the right thing to do. I had the benefit of a good school growing up and free lunch as well. And I am grateful for that, and I want all children to have that. The ultra-wealthy want to put the tax burden on the working class. We are already crushed by it. Sales tax and the effective tax of the tariffs disproportionately affect the working class. The wealthy want to get rid of any progressive taxation. If we do not tax them, then they will tax us. Yes, in the short term, this levy will hurt my pocketbook. But without it, the wealthy will look to other funding methods to put the cost disproportionately on us, the workers, to their benefit and our detriment. Thank you for your time. I have to leave now to go to work so I can keep living paycheck to paycheck.
This is Connie Crigger.
Hi, I'm Connie Crigger. I'm also a resident of Boone County. I'm actually a fifth-generation Boone Countyan, so I've been around for a while. I'm above the 55 group myself. I think the videos tonight speak for themselves. As board members, if you want to know why we do what we do, when you see Allison's video and you hear those kids talking about those programs or you hear the kids in our video talking, you understand the importance. I know this is not an easy task for you all to sit there and go, okay, we have to make this decision. But when you look at those kids, I hope that makes that decision easy for you. Just like all of us, when we go to the store, I'm sure all of us are making decisions now. You know, my personal insurance over the past three years has increased by 40%. Well, so has all the things we've purchased at school, whether it's a load of paper that now costs us $3,500 that, you know, three years ago cost us $2,800. Or intervention programs that used to cost me about $10,000 at school now cost me almost $20,000 at school. All of the increases that are taking place within our society impact us. And we've made cuts. We had, I think the majority of the schools had allocation cuts. So I do feel like we're trying to be fiscally responsible. And yet we know, I just read a great article from Dr. Brad Johnson on the power of class size and how that impacts students. And so, you know, that's something for you to consider. If we don't do this, are we increasing class sizes? What are we doing? But I think when you look at those kids in that video, that should answer your questions. I know you guys have a tough decision, but the right thing to do for these I know you guys have a tough decision, but the right thing to do for these kids is to make sure that we're providing the very best for them, so thank you.
And Kelly Stedham? Stedham? Sorry, handwriting again. Kelly Math. Yes. See, you should have written that.
I'll try and keep it short. Okay, here we go. I don't have much to add, because everyone who's spoken tonight has been so eloquent in explaining why this is a great decision for our schools and our community, and I wanted to thank the community members who are here too. I think we're all feeling a little bit scared about providing for our families in this time, and it's scary to hear, excuse me, that one of our bills might be going up by 4%. So I, as a math person, I want to take a moment and say that our bills are not going to be going up by 4%, which is something we've heard in the community, but rather what we're talking about is actually a .0002% increase in what you'll pay in taxes to schools. So in exchange for that investment, what we'll have is what everyone else here has said so well, not only an investment in how we're serving the 20,000 kids we have in our schools right now, not only in how we get to partner with the parents and families of all those schools, excuse me, of all those students, but also for our community. The 20,000 kids we have now are in kindergarten through 12th grade, but they're going to be 20,000 nurses, they're going to be 20,000 police officers, they're going to be 20,000 drivers on this road in the lane next to you. They're going to be the ones that you call when you need help in your home, and we want to provide them with the best, strongest chance they have to be successful, not only for them, but for our community as a whole. Thank you very much.
All right. Just as an FYI, I think this item that we're all discussing here is Item 11 on our agenda, and I think during that time, there'll be an in-depth presentation. Is that correct?
That's correct. We have some financial overview and information. If you are able to stick around, of course, we're not allowed to do that as part of our audience of citizens in the hearing. However, the Finance Office has prepared, so I appreciate you pointing that out, Chairman Parks.
I encourage everyone to stick around for that part. And with that, there's no more people that signed up for the tax levy portion. We're going to move on to our normal audience of citizens. And with that, I have to read a statement. "The Board welcomes the opportunity to hear from the community and inform the Board of your views on matters before the Board. Please keep in mind, the Board of Education's agenda is set, and by statute, the Board can only discuss items that are present on our agenda. The Board cannot legally, nor would the Board, discuss an issue specific to an employee or student in respect to privacy. These meetings are streamed live on YouTube, as you all know. Please be respectful in your comments. If you have a concern you'd like a response to or from the administration, feel free to leave your information with Mr. Eric Ball. Keep your comments to two minutes, so that all wish to speak may speak, and please don't gift your time to other people." With that, we have, again, Stacy Black. And Crew.
And Crew.
And Crew, yeah. Stacy Black, Principal of Boone County High School. I'm getting a phone call. Hold on. Lance Melchon, Athletic Director. Dan Court, Football Coach. We have Marvin Moynes, Football Player and Boone County High School Student, and Dakota Daniels, also Football Player and Student at Boone County High School. So we're just here to speak to the expansion of student opportunities. I think this is when I was supposed to speak, correct? Yeah. All right. I'll read, because I am better at that. So, you know, "We are hoping that this passes, because we believe this helps support and bridge funding and resource gaps across the district. For Boone County High School students in particular, your action ensures that all students can fully participate in athletics and extracurricular activities. It guarantees that our students will have the same opportunities and experiences as their peers across the district, giving every student the same opportunity." So we're really looking at access and opportunity and those experiences that every student has in this district. We all know that athletics, you know, often is the one thing that keeps kids in schools, and so we just want to make sure that all our kids have the same experience as everyone else, that has been difficult for us at our school when it comes to purchasing uniforms and equipment and other essential items that affect that access and participation. So we hope that this will help limit or increase student involvement and success, and, you know, we'll be extremely grateful if that can happen, so.
And I also want to add to that, just to thank you all for the investments you've already made and the barriers you've already removed for our kids in the past couple of years. And if you haven't been out to our school on a Friday night, you've got to come out and see what the lights do that you guys have purchased for us. So thank you for all those things, and thank you for the things you continue to do for the kids in my school.
We've got two fresh minutes.
Yeah, thank you, and, you know, we as a school, and, you know, I'm speaking, I feel like for probably most of the athletic coaches at Boone County is, you know, this is a very appreciated thing. That will help all of us create a competitive advantage and give every student, athlete at our school the experience of playing high school sports.
One of you say your name.
Introduce yourself.
Introduce yourself.
My name's Marvin, and I'm a student at Boone County High School. I play football, and I feel like if this does pass, it'd be great, because if you look at how we do compared to other schools, I feel like we fundraise like maybe two, three times more than like Cooper or Ryle or Connor, and I just feel like this could really help us grow that area.
Got it?
My name's Dakota Daniels. I've been a student at Boone County High School for four years, and I know this is just going to be a tremendous help to our athletic department. We've all had the struggle, and we're not, a lot of these kids aren't in like the best scenario to be able to pull funds and find people to help us fundraise, so, you know, every dollar counts towards our programs.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you all for coming out.
All right. I hope I get the next name right. It's Charlie Befano. Mr. Befano.
I was actually going to like pull my name from that, but if I let this continue, it's just going to get worse, so. I hate to stand up here and do this, especially today. I mean, I know, Jesse, you said it earlier, everybody said it earlier, but I mean, it hits home more to me, because I was there. I was working at Fire Department Dispatch Council. I buried my friends, so. To have to bring this up on a day like today really pains me, hurts me. This district needs to do something better for its employees, for their mental health. For when they have issues, when they have problems in a building, where can they go? Recently, we had an employee felt he had no way to go but to take the out, and that hurts me. That really does, because coming from where I come from, that's what my friends used to do, stuff like that. I'm constantly bombarded almost every day with some employee who's pissed off over what's going on at work, because nobody will listen to him. I have, we have employees, I have members, that I'm helping to transfer out of buildings, because they can't take it anymore. I've had, recently, I've had people decide to retire, because they can't take it anymore. There's days I don't want to go to work anymore. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of doing what I do. I'm tired of dealing with it, and I'm tired of listening to people bitch to me. I, I'm like at the end of it. I lost it a couple of weeks ago with a member who had an issue, because I didn't have an answer for him, and I was frustrated. So I actually told him to stop calling me, which I hate to do, but I approach leadership with ways to try to smooth things over, and I preach communication, and I know, granted, sometimes I'm not the world's greatest communicator, but when I get told by an administrator, well, I don't have to tell them why I'm doing something. That's wrong. That's wrong. I mean, tell the people why you're making a decision. Make them understand. And it's just more and more, and I'm just, I don't know what to do anymore. So like I said, I hated to do this on a day like today, because of what it means to me, but I just have, I have to say it. I can't keep it in anymore, so, that's it.
Thank you, Charlie. All right. That's all that signed up for the audience of citizens. Next, we'll move on to the Recommended Action Consent Agenda. Item 9, Items A through double T. Dr. Hauswald.
Yes, thank you again, Chairman Parks. I recommend the Board approve the Recommended Action Consent Agenda. Items A through double T is presented with the Treasures Report by Ms. Katie Noonan. Ms. Noonan will now give the Treasures Report.
Thank you, Dr. Hauswald. For the month of August, we began the month with an adjusted cash balance of $48,499,950. We had total receipts of $9.1 million and total expenditures of $10 million for a net decrease in cash of $903,487. Our balance on hand at the end of the month was $47,587,508. Some notable items for the month are that we collected $1.5 million in PSC property taxes, and of that, $630,000 was restricted for our building fund. We additionally collected $1 million in utility taxes. Our revenues look a little lower than what they have in the past couple of months, but this is because we collected more taxes in May and June, rather than July and August like we have in the past. Our expenditures are as planned, and you'll see they're up a little bit, and that's just with the teacher and school year staff returning and their payroll starting back up. Thank you.
Katie, can you explain the contingency amount that we have to have with that?
Yeah.
How much or what percentage that we have to have on hand?
Yeah. In the budget that'll be presented, we have a contingency amount of 5.6%. The state requires two, or you're going to get a warning when you're submitting your budget to them. Traditionally, we'd like to have a 5%, and that is just our contingency cash that we've set aside as a percentage of our expenses that we have budgeted for the year.
Do I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item A through double T as recommended? Motion, Ms. Wolf. Second, Mrs. Young. Any discussion? Motion was made by Mrs. Wolf, and second by Mrs. Young. Any discussion on the items on the consent agenda? I have a question. The Item Double C. The Connor High School Chair is going to Orlando. Does this include any spots for board members?
For the right price.
Okay, seeing a no.
For the right price.
About for Cooper High School that's going with the Drama Club to New York? Would that?
I don't believe it's budgeted for. Anywhere. Don't think it's budgeted.
All right.
Nor for the superintendent.
Any other, any further questions?
These are great opportunities, though. We, you know, a lot of our sponsors are, I know that there's so many people heavily involved in providing these opportunities for students, so, I mean, we're envious in a sense, only because it's really, I think we want to acknowledge the hard work that our, many of our school organizations, our site-based, our sponsors, our principals and teachers spend, if I may, in just providing those opportunities, so, thank you all.
Any further questions about the Items A through double T? Seeing none, move forward with a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes, 5-0. All right. Can we move on to Item 10, No Business or Old Business? There is no recommended old business. So we'll move on to Item 11, which is the Tax Rate Levy and Property Assessment.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Parks. I'm sorry. Thank you, Chairman Parks. This recommendation comes from the Budget Committee, and a recommendation from the budget, I'm making it on behalf of the Budget Committee to approve the Recommended Action New Business I as presented. We do have some information, as you previously indicated, so I'll turn it over to Mr. McCarter, Deputy Superintendent of Operations and Safety, as well as our business staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hauswald. As Dr. Hauswald said, we did discuss this at our August 5 Budget Committee meeting. We had a presentation to our committee during that meeting, and we wanted to share that presentation with you tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Daryl Denon and Katie to present those items to you.
Board, I do have a hard copy, if anybody would like this in hard copy. Pass those out. I think Chad has this presentation. So Page 1 is just a historical perspective of the assessed values for Boone County. You see a current-year assessment, $23 billion, up a bit from the prior year of $22.7 billion. An increase in real estate of $563 million and a decrease in tangible personal of $375. Page 2 shows the change in that assessment. So you can see the change in the assessed value for the area, or for Boone County. This year was only $313 million. You can see that is the lowest increase in the 10-year timeline that we look back, and significantly lower from a percentage standpoint. Part of that is the cyclical nature of the way they assess properties in Boone County. So they do property assessments in quadrants. This year, it was the lower half of Boone County, including the Walton-Veronia area, so the less industrialized part, less developed, and parts that were outside of the Boone County School District. You can see there's kind of a fluctuation, but that's a result of the property valuations. Page 3 shows what the actual rates levied have been over the last 10 years. You can see the proposed 65.5 for this year is lower than it was in 2020 and in 2021, and is on par with what we've had over the prior 10 years. Next page shows the anticipated revenue, $142 million if the tax rate is at 65.5. If we took the compensating rate, it would result in revenue of $137.5 million or lower revenue of $4.5 million, it would only be an increase of 2.65, which would significantly impair some of the objectives that we have for next year.
The next slide here shows our SEEK funding for the last 10 years. Our SEEK funding peaked in '17 and '19 and has since been on a decline. As our property assessments increase, our SEEK funding decreases, so they expect our local-level funding, the local effort, to increase here. So this shows the surrounding areas, what their tax rates were for last year. You'll see we're about in the middle. We're almost half of Walton-Veronia, who is number one in the state in the 10 years that we collected the data for. Walton-Veronia has been number one the entire time. Boone rated 74th. Last year, we were 85th. And of the top five districts, they are surrounding, they're our neighbors. It's Walton-Veronia, South Gate, Dayton, Covington, and Fort Thomas. We are pretty much right here in the middle. This one's a color graph, and you can kind of see those rates a little bit better. And then this shows the average across the state. The gray line there at the bottom is the average. You'll see we're about there. We're the green line. We trend just above and below it. Above it is Jefferson and Fayette County. And then we also have Kenton and Campbell on there, and the three of us are really about mid-level for the whole state. And this is a bar graph showing that same information.
Eric, I think you have some.
I wanted to emphasize, going back to Slide Number 4, and if you see the SEEK funding over a 10-year period, we have lost over $10 million or not had $10 million given to our district. And that's a significant amount of money over that period of time. And I want to point out, with that, I always think of our strategic plan we put together, an empowered workforce, and we've heard from many of our great teachers tonight, that to recruit and retain those people, the great people that we already have in our district, we need to have funding for that. district, we need to have funding for that. We had our break-the-mold winner this evening, and the wonderful things that she did in the classroom, and kids were now excited about science. Well, we need to be able to compensate and have those people stay in our district. We need to recruit great people to come to our district, as Kelly was mentioning earlier about the fifty thousand dollar mark that, for younger teachers to come to our district. This is about the kids. This is not about anything else other than the kids and what we can do to create a great environment for the kids, just like Connie Krieger was talking about, the orange frog that she's been doing for multiple years, and those kids in that video. That's really what it comes down to. So, I can't emphasize enough, this is a very important thing to do. I know it's difficult, but it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. We will make this information available, of course, on our website as part of this meeting, and we know the board members have copies. Thank you for that presentation. In our review of this, and as we shared in the Budget Committee, we believe that we have had meetings with the Clerk's Office, Assessor's Office, the Sheriff, and saying, you know, in the future, are there ways to try to look at the assessment schedule? Because the way we assess in our county on a quarter, on a, on a every-four-year basis is really creating, you know, last year, two billion dollars in growth, this year, you know, a little over three hundred million, and that does affect it. We also really have highlighted in our work that our tax rate has stayed steady. You know, I know our math teacher that was here, if you really were to map out our tax rate over ten years, you would really have a fairly horizontal line when you were looking at that, on that curve, and the reason for that is we've averaged at sixty-five cents. We were fortunate last year to have a temporary reprieve because of the high AV, and this would be a, really a restoration of that rate, taking it right back to the average. We also had a lot of teachers who mentioned tonight and spoke to the value, almost the value proposition of what we are providing here. We wanted to share the slides that show, for example, that in the three county, last year's tax rates, in the three northern counties of Campbell, Kenton, and Boone, we were the lowest, we were below the state average. And we do fluctuate, but when you look at us across the state, particularly in comparison to ISDs, we're very efficient. We're very efficient because we have a large number of students per building. We spend eighty-five percent of our money on staff, and so, again, looking at it at a historical basis and looking at a comparative basis, we're really proud of the fact that we do continue to stay around that sixty-five cent average. And the last thing, I really do appreciate your point you made for me in terms of the tax, when you increase by four percent, it doesn't increase a person's cost by four cents, as you know, and so, it's that funny math that we spend a lot of time trying to help our middle school teacher, and sometimes high school students understand. And then the last thing is we continue to advocate and have conversations with our state representatives to continue to try to address the SEEK, the SEEK formula. That is the state formula that penalizes high-growth districts, and so, if we had maintained our state funding, remember, a lot of our funding goes to state and it gets redistributed. There are, there are counties with low, and school districts with low assessed rates, and so, they just keep their rate at really low because it doesn't raise in that, they just continue to get more and more money from the state, and we get less and less over the last ten years. And to be clear, that is a solution. If we could restore SEEK funding, that would allow us to lower our rates because it would help with that balance. So, there are a lot of data points that we encourage you to take a look at this, we want to share this, but we mostly wanted to make sure that we looked at this big picture and didn't look at our tax rate changes from one year, but looked at over a ten-year period, particularly that we continue to average sixty-five, sixty-five cent tax rate on the hundred and that we have lost ten million dollars, and of course, that isn't proportional with funding, with enrollment. We know we've gained enrollment in the last ten years, but we've still lost ten million dollars, so we really need to continue to advocate for improvements in that formula that doesn't penalize Boone County, which would therefore allow us to ideally look at a better balance between state and local dollars with the end goal of keeping those rates where they are or even lower. And with that, I conclude my comments, and as I precluded before the presentation, this recommendation comes from the Budget Committee with a recommendation to pass as presented.
Questions from the board? Comments? Oh, my apologies, yep. Have a motion to approve new business item A, tax rate levy, property assessment as recommended.
A second.
Any discussion?
Just so that the record and the minutes are clear, can we just reread specifically what that rate is going to be into the record for the motion?
For the board to vote to levy the tax rates as presented, generating the maximum of four percent revenues, sixty-five point five cents per hundred valuation of real estate, sixty-five point five cents per hundred dollars valuation of tangible property, and forty-nine point seven cents per hundred valuation of motor vehicles. Thank you for that, sorry about that.
Any discussion? Comments? I have a question, and I asked this earlier of our person, but I wanted to just point out. One of the pieces of paper we were given by the state, the Department of Education, says that the watercraft assessment in Boone County is a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for all non-commercial boats in Boone County. And only fifteen thousand dollars for aircraft, recreational, non-commercial. It's explained to me that the airport is partly in Kenton County, that might be the reason, but I know for me, my boat is about a third of that countywide, one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars that they say is what we're getting a percentage of.
Thank you.
Just pointing it out, I don't think that's correct. The whole county only has a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars worth of boats. It's a little strange. With that, I do have a follow-up question. There's a mark on here saying that we pay two point two-five percent collection fee. What is this?
Sure, so that's the fee that we pay because the county, or because the school board does not send out independent tax bills per, by law, because the county does that for us, we have to pay a share of the collection expenses, so like when they mail them out, postage, all of the different expenses that go into the actual collection of taxes.
We pay it to whom?
The county.
County. Sheriff's Office in particular.
The Sheriff's Office?
Yeah, it's distributed between Sheriff's Office and the actual county, the Clerk's Office.
So, two point two-five percent of the local effort? That's what we're talking about tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's fairly low across Kentucky.
Agreed. We mentioned earlier, Dr. Hauswald, and maybe one of the other people can answer this question, it went kind of by quickly, but the assessments, a lot of Boone County residents are confused how our area could have less valuation. In other words, tangible personal, they're saying, is down three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. There's a sentiment in the community that that's not, how can you have lower assessment? Net assessment growth's negative three hundred, three hundred and seventy-five million dollars.
And growth.
When we see all this stuff going on.
And that gets back to what we were talking about, actually, Daryl can mention it.
So, tangible property is really what I would consider a personal property tax, it's basically machinery and inventory, so mostly for commercial. We inquired with the Property Valuation Administrator, his speculation was that people were drawing down inventories and not investing in equipment right now, and that his equipment would be depreciable, so they would have depreciated year over, year over year, and haven't made investments in equipment because of the economy and the uncertainty in the economy.
And because of that lower net assessment of growth?
Yes.
You know, all the various county services would incur less income, basically, revenue. Got it. And then the one other question I had for you that might have skipped over me, what did we mean by the cyclical nature of assessments? And who performs assessments in Boone County?
My God.
Yeah, so, it's done by the Property Valuation Administrator, so working with the county clerk, and they, they assess all properties every four years, but they do it, they have divided the county into quadrants, and so they do kind of the northeast portion, kind of the central portion, a western portion, and then a southern portion, once every four years, and they will reassess the property values.
So, when I drive through the county and I see these huge giant developments that came up in the last year, they may not have been assessed?
That's correct.
This year?
That's correct. They may not be for another three years.
Assess not for another three years?
Yeah, so they would be paying property taxes.
Is that, point of clarification, is that the reassessment schedule?
The reassessment, yeah.
So, a new, a new development, right?
So, like my personal, my home would be assessed. This year, I would maintain that same property value over the next three years, and then they would reassess it at that time, and it would increase the assessed value.
And when we met with the Assessor's Office and the Clerk's Office and the Sheriff and had a conversation about the assessment cycle, our point was, you know, would we reconsider how we do this? Because every, you know, for, and there are other cyclical factors in property values, but, you know, when we, when we do the Walton Verone in the far south area, which is not even in our district, some of it, which is, is a little more rural, we see less growth. So, they seem very open to that and a consideration, because if we can try to create quadrants or, you know, multiple sections when added together every four years creates greater balance, and it's always hard to control, right? It's like, it's like every ten years after the census, when we, when you do your political subdivisions, populations change, but if we could do that and try to not have, where we have two billion in growth and then a small growth, it would, it would help levy, level out and prevent some of these spikes that we're seeing.
So, a lot of moving components to county funding of various things, but especially for this board who, you know, is heavily regulated and needs to come up with, you know, a certain amount of funds ourselves from the local effort, it's complicated for sure, and involves many different local agencies. With that, any more comments?
Well, just keep in mind that all week control is this rate. The rates that we are setting tonight, that is the only power this board is given by the legislature. Everything else is controlled by state law generated in the state legislature. And when the PVA has gotten off schedule, and I didn't know tonight was tell our age night, but I'm way above fifty-five. I'm above sixty-five and proud of it, but I got hit with a twenty-one percent increase, and two years later, got hit with a twenty-three percent increase, so we don't get a get out of jail free card, we pay this too, and I'm a single individual, Mr. Parks is a senior, I'm, you know, one income earner, trying to keep the boat afloat, so I understand the struggle. I am officially a senior adult, according to McDonald's, so my income is pretty fixed too, and even though I'm still working, so I get all of that. But northern, we're, I think we're, what has always been problematic to me with SEEK is northern Kentucky has always been a strong economic engine for the Commonwealth as a whole. We generate a lot of income through taxes that the state gets that we ship down, and then they divvy it up to take care of the Commonwealth as they see fit, and those are the dollars that do not come back to Boone County. We send them, we, at one point, we were getting back forty cents on the dollar or thirty cents on the dollar, and that was money that went to level out SEEK in areas who kept their rates at thirty cents and never raised them, and were never made to. There have been years that we have been frowned upon in Boone County because we were not setting our rates and doing more and creating more in local effort. We were expected, because we were property-rich, to create more, and if we didn't, we got penalized at the state. And as our district grows in property value, our SEEK decreases, so we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place because there's a lot of things that we don't control. But what we do control is what we do here, and our responsibility are the twenty thousand students we have and the four-plus-thousand staff that we have to provide them a good working environment, a decent living wage. I mean, when you're talking about students, brand-new teachers who have graduated college with high-level degrees, that they're embarrassed to say their parents still have to pay their car insurance and give them money towards a cellphone because they can't live in an own apartment, their own apartment, and pay all their bills. That's not the American dream to me, especially for one of the most difficult professions that has the most impact on the future of not only Boone County but Kentucky and our nation. We are creating the next generation of leaders and entrepreneurs and healthcare workers and all of that, and so, I don't like tax rate increases, I don't like to pay more in taxes, but this one I don't mind because every dollar stays right here in Boone County, for Boone County staff, for Boone County students, for programming, to take those bright shining faces that show up every day and let them dream and become what they want to become. And I can't in good conscience not support that, while we must be responsible and accountable and transparent in how we manage those dollars and continue to make sure that we squeeze every drop out of each and every one of them in how we manage our structure and all that we do, while we continue to plead for help. Boone County is always two or three from the bottom of state funding in Kentucky every year and have spent pretty much the whole time I've been on this board, so it's money that we are in, it's not a cost, it's an investment, and if our kids in this community are not worth that investment, I really don't know what is.
Any other comments? All right, we'll move forward with a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Four yes, one no. Motion passes. I'll take a second to explain my vote. As many in the community know, I think I served on this board, was one of the first board members to work against taking the, this rate. Was it last year? I can't even remember now. I, I might be, I don't know, I'm assuming I might be the only one that stays up late at night reading all these financial statements, and based on economic conditions and looking at what we have coming down the pike as far as economic conditions and various other things, we just simply couldn't afford it. We had to do this for a variety of reasons, I won't go into everything that Ms. Byrd and all the other people that spoke in support of. I particularly am not a I, I particularly, I'm not a tax person, but what I am is an efficiency person. And the people that pay attention to these board meetings might know that this is the more, most efficient board we've had in a long time, over the last few years. We have done more to save, and someone mentioned administration. We've saved in administration, we've saved in costs, we've negotiated contracts, we've lowered. And if you, if you like watching these meetings, you can find some pretty healthy debate on the money that we've saved here. So it's about efficiency to me. And the one thing that we have not scrimped on, or whatever people say, is the human part. That part, we have more work to do because we need people to stay in public education. We need people to keep doing a good job, and I say almost every board meeting, every one of them. We choose in Boone County to have wonderful schools. We choose that. And I choose to sit on a board that protects taxpayer investment and continue that tradition of having fantastic schools. And that's why I support and voted yes. With that, we'll move on to.
Can I say something?
Absolutely, sorry, my apologies.
I want to just clarify too, on my end, I think one of the biggest factors for me was looking at the 10-year view of the SEEK formula and what it's looked like in Boone. Everybody knows I hate property taxes, like we all do, nobody likes them. But when I realized how less we are getting now compared to what we were getting 10 years ago, and knowing the increase in students that we have and the increase in costs, it's, it's alarming to me. We, we real, I mean, if people want to see some cost drop in terms of the tax rate, they need to talk to the legislators about lowering and fixing that SEEK formula. That's the only way it's going to happen. And the fact that we've been able to stay at that 65 cents for so long is a remarkable testament to what this board has done over the years. So, but my decision was mostly because of looking at the SEEK formula and seeing this $10 million deficit over the last 10 years essentially.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move forward with Agenda Item 11, Recommended Action, New Business Item B, Dr. Housewald.
Yes, thank you again, Chairman Parks. I recommend the board approve Recommended Action, New Business Item B, which is our working budget for FY 2026. A special thank you to all those who have been instrumental in putting together and designing and contributing to that, that, that budget, which really does guide our work. And with that, I, of course, recommend New Business Item B as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve New Business Item B, Working Budget for Physical Year 2026 as recommended? Motion, Ms. Wolf.
Second.
Any discussion? I don't know if people know, but I think the actual working budget is, what, 50 pages, roughly? 56 pages? It is pretty detailed and a lot of work goes into that. And again, counting every penny, right? And I appreciate it. I actually, I was up really late last night, and I went through all 56 pages. Some of it I admittedly probably don't understand, but I tried. And it gets easier with time, I will say that. With that, any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 11, Recommended Action, New Business Item C, Dr. Housewald.
Oh, yes, I recommend the board approve Recommended Action, New Business Item C, Expansion of Student Opportunities. And special thanks, of course, to Ms. Black and to the athletic director, as well as our, our coaching students from Boone High School for coming out tonight.
All right, do I have a motion to approve New Business Item C, Expansion of Student Opportunities as recommended? Motion, Ms. Wolf, second, Ms. Byrd. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right, move on to Agenda Item 12, Information Proposals and Communications. Any board members have things that they would like to report?
I, I just want to say from, kind of as a, most of what would be in a report back to the board on the Budget Committee meeting from Mr. Parks or myself, we've already discussed tonight. But I do want to thank everyone for their hard work on putting the budget together and keeping things moving. And Darryl's still here, so I guess we haven't run, scared him off yet. And I appreciate that, walking in in the middle of all of this. And I, I do want to thank the, you know, for giving the opportunity to look at this expansion program in the Budget Committee. And I just want to kind of reiterate, I, you know, wholeheartedly support this. And I think our community will, as, I'm hoping as well, when they see the, the benefits that it's going to, to help. There's, sometimes the benefit is in giving as much as it is in, in the receiving of whatever that gift is. But, you know, I, being in the financial world, I'm all about processes and checks and balances and transparency. And the only comments that I ask for in our Budget Committee meeting is that we have a solid process, which I'm, you know, trusting that Darryl and Katie will come up with. And that we keep this very transparent and that it's accountable at any given time on what's there and where it's gone and why it's gone. And I'm just happy to see how this goes.
Any other reports? Exciting bunch. All right. Seeing no other, seeing no other comments, we'll move to Item 13, which is Closed Session Pursuant to KRS 61.810, Section 1C, Meeting Specified by Law to Be Conducted in Private for the Purposes of Discussion of Proposed or Pending Litigation Involving a Public Agency. Do I have a motion to adjourn to closed session? Motion, Ms. Byrd. Second, Ms. Young. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Cindy? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0, and it is, what time? It's like 8:40.